Okay. Good evening. Good evening and welcome. Can you see me? Yes.
Yes.
I'm pleased to welcome everyone to this meeting of the King's Barton Forum. The time is six o'clock. The meeting is being held under the regulations which came into effect on the 4th of April 2020 in response to the COVID-19 situation. My name is councillor Jane Rutter and I'm the chair of this forum. I've got a few housekeeping reminders to run through as there are new working practices in response to the new regulations. First of all, can I please ask everyone present in this virtual meeting to keep your microphones muted and your cameras turned off? I can hear all sorts of things going on in the background. So make sure your microphones are muted and your cameras switched off whilst you're not addressing the meeting as this will reduce background noise and avoid any unintentional disturbances. And can I also advise that the meeting is being audio recorded and live streamed from the council's website? In addition, a video recording of the meeting will be uploaded to the council's YouTube channel after the meeting. So it'll all be YouTube stars from tonight. Members and officers where appropriate for each item, please use the chat function of the meeting to indicate that you wish to speak or to raise a point of order or explanation, and I will then invite you to speak at the appropriate time. Each member will be invited to speak in turn. Therefore, I would encourage all members to keep your contributions as clear and concise as possible, please. When speaking and referring to the agenda papers, please make sure that you reference the page or paragraph number. Thank you. The duration of this virtual meeting is planned for one and a half hours, and I'd like to not go over that if possible. Finally, if members wish to leave the meeting at any point, could they please make themselves known to me through the chat function? I will announce to the meeting that you are to leave. Perhaps, Matthew, I could ask the Democratic Services Officer, that's Matthew, to undertake a roll call of members to confirm who is present this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Members, if you wouldn't mind just unmute your microphones, I'll just do a very quick roll call. Councillor Godfrey.
I am present.
Councillor Lernie.
Present.
Councillor Porter.
Present.
Councillor Prince.
Present.
Councillor Scott.
Present.
Councillor Warwick.
Present.
Councillor Todd.
Present.
Councillor Duncan. Councillor Duncan.
I don't think she's present.
Okay. And I've had apologies from, oh, and councillor Rutter, sorry.
Present.
And I've had apologies, Chair, from councillor Horrell and councillor Burgess.
Lovely, thank you.
That completes the roll call, Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Could I ask you now to confirm the names of the officers who are present this evening and any members of the public? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So in terms of officers, we have Chris Hughes, the Implementation Officer, Julie Pinnock, Service Lead, Built Environment. We've also joined by Viv Hill from Cala and Alison Thompson. And finally, Chair, there's myself, Matthew Watson and Dave Shaw from Democratic Services. Just before I finish on that one, Chair, also I'm visiting councillors. I can also say we've got councillor Weir and councillor Cunningham on the call. And finally, Chair, in terms of residents that have registered to speak, we've got Katerina Zooker, Mike Slin and Ed Spooner. Thank you, Chair.
Very good. Thank you very much, Matthew, and welcome, Mr Mayor. Nice to see you joining us in our virtual meeting. Thank you very much. Before we move on to the business of the meeting, I want to update you all on a number of changes that have taken place at the City Council since we last met. Steve Tilbury, who was the Strategic Director at the City Council and had supported the forum since its inception, left the council in September. Hopefully, Steve is tuning in this evening, as I'd like to formally thank him for his efforts on behalf of the forum and for his many years of faithful service to this council. Steve's role in the forum is being taken over by Julie Pinnock, the City Council's Service Lead for the Built Environment. Welcome, Julie. Julie is present this evening and I know is keen to support the work of the forum going forward. Finally, Chris Hughes, who many of you will know, now has an amended role. Chris is now combining his previous role of Implementation Officer with the King's Barton Community Development Worker role. Chris will be taking us through his report later this evening and will be the day-to-day contact and liaison officer at the City Council. I'd just like to ask Julie Pinnock to explain how this new role for Chris will work. If you could just do that now, Julie, is that okay? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chair. Happy to do that and welcome and nice to meet you all. As Jane said, I've a tale about myself, as I've worked at the City Council for a long time, I'm a chartered town planner. I was a development manager when King's Barton was going through its planning stages. So I've got sort of quite a bit of background, although not as recent background as Chris and the rest of you, and that's something I will work on to get back up to speed. But Chris's role is a hybrid role, if you like. So it brings forward the implementation role, which makes sure that development's sort of proceeding as we and Cala anticipate, and it's that two-way street of communication. But it's also about that liaison role with the community and making sure that the community form and develop and grow. And I very much do those two things as symbiotic in any event. And I think Chris, with the skill set he already has, the knowledge he had, will bring that role forward and be an attribute to the forum and King's Barton Development. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Julie, that's great. I'd like to also acknowledge everyone's frustration that we haven't met as a forum since January this year. Our March meeting was cancelled as we approached national lockdown. Then in the summer, the King's Barton site was shut down and local authority resources were focused on the pandemic, so our summer meeting was also cancelled. However, I know that officers have kept in touch with the parish councils, residents, associations and residents, and I hope that we can now get back to our regular schedule of meetings. So we will now move to the agenda, as you will hopefully all have it in front of you. We've gone through the apologies. Matthew, are there any other apologies apart from councillors?
None, none I'm aware of, Chair.
Did we give Stephen Burgess, Chair of Littleton and Harestock Parish Council?
Sorry, yeah. Yes.
Okay. Anybody else want to mention an apology? Nope, okay, lovely. Do any councillors have any disclosures of interest to make? If you could indicate on chat if you wish to declare an interest at this stage? No?
Sorry, I can't.
Councillor Weir? Sorry? Sorry, councillor Weir?
I can't use the chat as I'm a guest, I think. But I did want to declare an interest. I'm a trustee of the University of Winchester Academy Trust and we are the sponsor of the Barton Farm Academy. I think it's non-prejudicial.
I'm sure it is. Thank you, councillor Weir. Councillor Porter?
Thank you. I'm a county councillor and so we will be discussing probably highways issues today. It's a non-prejudicial personal, there's no prejudicial interest, but nevertheless, it's relevant, I think.
Councillor Todd, you want to share?
Yes, I'm here as, I'm actually attending this meeting as a county councillor, as the county councillor representative on this committee, one of them. And the county council policy is not to declare an interest as a district councillor, but I'm happy to highlight that I am a member of Winchester City Council and also a member of Winchester City Council Cabinet. So there may be some issues where despite my being here as a county councillor, I have a personal but not prejudicial interest as a city councillor.
And expertise to share with us, I'm sure. Thank you very much. So if we now move on to the minutes of the meeting of the...
Sorry, Chair, Matthew again. Councillor Warwick wanted to...
Oh, councillor Warwick.
Sorry, Chair, I didn't want to hold you up, just to say probably ditto to that as my role as a Hampshire County councillor.
Thank you very much, councillor Warwick, thank you. Okay, we're done with our declarations of interest. Thank you. Okay, the minutes of the meeting of the 21st of January 2020. These are on pages seven to 10 of the main agenda pack. I'd like to move that those minutes are agreed as a true record. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Everybody?
Agreed.
I take silence as a cent. Thank you. Okay, lovely. We now move on to public participation. I believe we have Katerina, yes, Katerina's here, the Chair of the Residents' Association. And Ed Spooner and Mike Slin are also here, I hope, yes? But Katerina, I believe you're going to speak first and then Mike and Ed can join in if they've got anything to add, is that right?
Sorry. Yes, thank you, Chair, and good evening, everyone. As you are aware, we have submitted our questions, which had been outstanding since the cancelled meeting in March, and we have received a response to that from Chris Hughes. However, we sent a follow-up, a set of follow-up to these questions, and I don't know if you'd like me to go through these or how you'd like me to go above this.
Yes, if you just quickly go through your follow-up questions and if, Chris, you'd like to just briefly respond to those as they come up, that would be great. Thank you.
Yes. Our first question was following up from the request we submitted some time ago about making Andover Road safer with a crossing point, a proper crossing point that allows people to cross safely. This was originated from the fatal accident that occurred in January, but this was, I think, is long overdue. And because of the lack of any response from the forum, we wrote directly to councillor Humby of Hampshire County Council. We wanted to have possibly more information about the, how the accident occurred and what the causes of, if speeding especially was one of the causes, and of course, the lack of a proper crossing point. The response was that, quite unsatisfactorily, we couldn't hear any information about any reports from the police, and I don't think that this is available to the Hampshire County Council. So the, following that, there was a survey in March, in early March, which showed that the number of pedestrians crossing at this location is not enough to justify the installation of a light-controlled crossing, which I think is quite ridiculous because a rainy day in early March is not representative of the increasing use that I'm sure families and children even alone will do more, will start doing more and more now that the Barton Farm Academy is open. And year after year, there will be even more residents from Harestock using the area on this side, and if nothing else, just to go to the nature reserve, which is already attracting lots of dog walkers and just occasional walkers and cyclists. So this is a very important point and to us, but to many of our neighbouring areas. And we've started a petition, which we might have worded a bit strongly, but we got frustrated about the lack of response. So ultimately, we'd like to ask the forum if there is any way that the forum can support our petition in terms of guidance and local support to send the papers that were filling up with signatures around the area. So that's just a suggestion, but we'd like to hear from you. But also, we were told that it's a temporary measure, sorry, no, the solution could be, is being investigated to install bollards at the site of the ridge. Sorry, I didn't specify this, but it's kind of an assumption that the ridge line at the top of Andover Road is the location we would like to see made safer. And so these bollards that are currently under investigation for installation are, to us, not sufficient and only valid as a temporary solution if installing a proper crossing point takes longer. We know that the plan is currently to close Andover Road, but we're not going to accept that for the next four years, with all the delays that always occur with development sites and works, that the road is not made safer sooner and with more effective solutions. I don't know if you'd like me to wait for Chris's...
Yes, Katerina, thank you.
I'll just mute myself.
Yes, thank you. In fact, we have sent your comments to Chris about, in the responses to his previous responses for all the questions. So I don't know if Chris wanted to just go through those altogether and you can come back on any of the issues that are not sufficiently answered by Chris. So, Chris, if you'd like to respond to that point from Katerina about the crossing and perhaps go through the other points and then she can come back if there are any more queries that arise from that. Thank you.
Certainly, Chair, thank you and good evening, everyone. Katerina's summarised the situation very accurately. Hampshire County Council are not willing to spend money on what they term abortive works because Andover Road is scheduled to be closed. So their response to the investigation was to propose bollards, luminous bollards and cutting some of the vegetation back. The last correspondence I had with them was this morning with the safer roads team, and they seemed to indicate that they were consulting county councillors. Sorry, I didn't get a chance to confirm that with any of the county councillors present this evening, but I'd be grateful if, perhaps after I've gone through the questions, they might be able to confirm that and we can discuss that further, Chair. With that, I'll move on to the second query, the second clarification that the Residents' Association sought. And this is in relation to the local cycling and walking plan. I know councillor Todd is heavily involved with this. Lucy McConne is the relevant officer at Winchester City Council, and she is well aware of the strong interest in relation to residents from King's Barton. I did ask her if there's a specific way she can get in touch with you or you can get in touch with her about your comments. I'm afraid I didn't get a chance to chase her up today, but I will do so. And hopefully we'll get some direct channel that you can feed into that. The third question is about the surfacing of the roads and junctions, particularly in Phase A. In specific, the question is about what changes are being made to the specification of the avenue. Members of the forum will be aware that it's a great frustration to residents at King's Barton that the roads have not yet been finished at Phase 1B for three, over three years now, since people have started moving in. So there are quite technical things about this, but I'll try to summarise them as best I can, and obviously I'm happy to answer a question subsequently. The three main elements that are causing Hampshire County Council concern are the central median strip and what that will be made of, the elevation, so the raised tables, the vertical deflection, they call it, and how traffic will be managed in the local centre. The local, the, to start with the median strip, as some of you may recall, was originally thought, the original concept was to have granite sets through it. Road safety auditors have looked at and looked at that and said it's absolutely not appropriate for a road of this type for overtaking with cyclists and motorcycles, it's incredibly dangerous. So what we're trying to find now is a solution that allows the concept, because that's the concept in which the road has been designed and built, to maintain the concept, but is a long-term, maintainable, robust and safe material that can be laid and not have to be replaced in a short period of time. The second element is the vertical deflection. Hampshire County Council are not keen on having raised tables on a main road into Winchester. It causes issues with gritters in particular, but also emergency services, and it creates noise as well, because you can imagine lorries bumping over raised sections of the road and creating a lot of noise for the people that live on the avenue itself. And the third element is the local centre and how that's going to be managed. The original concept was to have that entire area as a shared surface, that traffic and people would mix and pedestrians would have effective priority. Members of the forum will probably be aware that the government has, in the last two years or so, provided further guidance on this type of issue and in this type of situation, where they've deemed it not to be appropriate to have mixed-use areas for local centres. This has meant an effective look at the redesign of the entire road, because obviously one element knocks onto the rest of them. So Cala are in the process of trying to work out exactly what impact that's going to have on the whole design and how it's all going to integrate. This isn't the work of a moment, and it is being, we are working very closely with Hampshire County Council to try and come up with solutions to this. But it is something that is taking quite long, and particularly with the lockdown in the middle of it all as well, it's taken quite a while. The second part of the question from the Residents' Association is, does the handover of the smaller roads depend on specification changes to the avenue? In effect, yes, it does. Again, without being too technical, the road from Andover Road as it is now, where the traffic lights are, and Andover Road, under highways speak, is considered one part of, is considered one element. It's called a Section 278 agreement. So the only way you can adopt a highway, the smaller roads within the, within the local area, is that they are connected to an adopted highway. So unless the road connecting to Andover Road and the avenue are adopted, none of the other roads can be adopted. So it is a, it's a bit of a chicken, egg situation. Obviously, no one envisaged that it would take this long to sort out, but unfortunately, that is the situation.
Chris, is that the end of that point?
It is, yes, sorry, I do realise I'm...
No, that's all right, don't worry, these are very important issues. Mike Slin, could you please just make sure your microphone's switched off, because we can hear a bit of distracting noise from your end until you're asked to speak, please? Thank you very much. Katerina, I know you wanted to come back, and I saw that councillor Todd had his hand up as well. If you could, if members could use the chat to let me know what you want to speak on, that would be more helpful than the hand, which is far too general and distracting. That would be helpful. Thank you very much. So, Katerina, if you want to come back very briefly, please, and councillor Todd, and then, Chris, if we carry on with your responses. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I understand that there are time, that there are, sorry, things that can't be controlled too much. However, this end of the development has quite a lot of work that hasn't been completed. So with the streets, that's one side, but I'm sure that street lights working and plants replaced where they need to be is now something that residents would like to see done, whether the, you see, what the council does is kind of in the background for us, and we are allowed to come to this public forum, and we appreciate the opportunity to understand more of what is going on behind, in the background. But we'd like to hear from Cala, from you, Chris, of course, when they expect the site will be finished and then they can do all the handovers that they need to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Katerina. Before you come in, councillor Todd, perhaps one of the two representatives of Cala would like to come back very briefly on those couple of issues that have been raised so far.
Thank you. Yes, it's Viv Hill here. Good evening, everyone. Nice to see faces. Katrina, hello. Thanks very much for your questions. Very quickly, just on, I think the two points Cala can come back very quickly and commit to, one, you've mentioned the landscaping and two, the street lighting, that is obviously two areas that we can control ourselves and our contractors, whether that's through the maintenance schedules that are in place. Clearly, I think Chris has answered the road situation as best he can. Timescale-wise, incredibly difficult to commit to when we get those approvals in place with Hampshire County Council. As Chris has said, no one envisages this would take three, four years to get a resolution, and it's frustrating from everyone's perspective, particularly as we've got a number of the principles, the design code was set, established, which set these firm principles, and now we're having to unpick a lot of that initial design work to go back and find alternative solutions. So we are having far more regular, if I can give you any comfort, we're having far more regular meetings with Hampshire County Council. And it's not just myself, it's our technical director, our planning director, it's Chris, Chris is bringing these all together. So all the conversations are being had, whether that's to talk about the adoption of the roads, Section 106 matters, or it's the design of the neighbourhood centre. We've got a number of design solutions we're looking at for the neighbourhood centres, to how we can make that safer, more accessible for pedestrians and cyclists and the conflict with cars. Those initial sketches are welcomed by Hampshire County Council, so I hope we'll continue those positive discussions going forward. I wish I could commit to timescales, wish we had a crystal ball on that one. I think we all feel like that, but we'll continue working as hard as we possibly can to get this resolved and get it completed. I suppose just there might be some sense of frustration in that things seem to be happening in Phase 1A to the south. That is effectively because Hampshire have said to us, let us get the right design solution for the south. We know it's not going to be easy to get that, and then we can roll out in one hit the final solution in 1B to the north. So it's, it's, it might seem a little bit backward, that's where we are with the matter, but we'll continue to keep you posted.
Thank you, Viv. And I would like to say that we do have a commitment from the county council that a highways officer who can answer these questions will be present at the next meeting of the forum, so we will hold the council to that. Councillor Todd, you wanted to contribute something about the movement strategy, the Winchester Movement Strategy, that would be very helpful. And then I believe we have contributions from councillor Porter and councillor Lernie. If they could be brief, please, because we do want to go back to Chris's...
So I'm, you know, if I, with your permission, Chair, I will make a comment on the movement strategy as a city councillor, not as a county councillor, and I hope nobody minds me doing that, because I'm the cabinet member responsible for the movement strategy. I'm very happy to do two things in that role. One is, I'm very happy to take people through the latest status of the movement strategy, and if you want a meeting with the King's Barton Residents' Association so that I can take you through that, I'm very happy to do that. In terms of the, in terms of the consultation on the formal proposals for Andover Road or anywhere else that directly refers to you, I can, I will commit to do my utmost to make that happen. I don't think it will be a problem. I think the only thing is that it's probably the input on all the routes has been received from the cycling groups and the walking groups, and so I suspect it would be a wasted exercise to show you the previous proposals, because they are being reworked based on the input received. And the thing I would stress is it does not include anything within the boundary of King's Barton itself. So the scope is very much the road and the highway, particularly from King's Barton into the centre, which has been the main focus of design work, both for walkers and cyclists. I'm happy to do what I can to get that to the group for you to chance to input on, but what I, what that may not be is showing you the previous version that has been consulted on, it may be waiting until the next one becomes available. The other thing I'd quickly touch on, there was a question saying that county council rep, have county councillors been consulted on the question of a crossing? The area in question is outside my division, so I wouldn't normally be consulted directly. However, because many of the residents inside my division regularly use that crossing, I have made my views clear in no uncertain terms that I would like to see that crossing there, I would like to see a reduction in speed, and I strongly, strongly support the residents' campaign and will do whatever I can from my position to try and make it happen.
Thank you, councillor Todd. Councillor Porter?
Thank you. I'm sitting here as a city councillor, but I'm also a county councillor, and I'm a county councillor for that division, so I'm going to go the other way. I took this up with the county councillor. I took this up with the county council again and I have got a response from Steve Clough, who's the director of property and facilities and property services, to say that Barton Farm has been escalated, the issues at Barton Farm, including the access to the school, Barton Farm School and across the Andover Road has been escalated to executive members and colleagues in E T are leading to this, are leading on this. And councillor Todd and I met with the team at the county council last week, I think it was, and we asked for a, effectively a delivery board of this before every meeting so that we have, we can report better to this committee and to encourage them to come with that level of progress. It falls too easily between Barton Farm, between Cala Homes and the county council and we need to keep the pace up on this. So just as Martin says, we've, we're very conscious of the S106 and all the matters that have been raised by Katerina at the moment. So thank you.
Oh, yeah, sorry, one quick extra comment.
Yes, councillor Todd?
We have done a detailed review, councillor Porter and I, of every single outstanding section 106 requirement, both for Hampshire and for the city. And also the planning requirements outlined in the original appeal decision and gone to officers and effectively asked for a plan to deliver what should have been committed and should have been delivered.
Great. Well, let's hope that the county council will come forward with that plan to the next forum at the very latest.
Can I just say, it is actually also a responsibility of Cala Homes though, too?
Yes, yes, indeed. Could I just briefly, because there seems to be a lot of agreement and strong feeling about the initial discussion that we're having about the crossing on Andover Road? And I'd like to propose that we as a forum formally write to the county council, supporting the residents' association and their petition, not only for a crossing on Andover Road, but also one on Worthy Lane, because I think that that links up the cycle route across Barton Meadows as well into the city. And therefore they're both crucial linkages for pedestrians and cyclists. Unless anybody has a disagreement with that or would like to amend that, I will propose that, that I write as Chair of this forum to that effect, if that's agreed with everybody.
Fully support that, Chair.
Thank you very much, thank you. Okay, Chris, if we could move back to you now very quickly, if we may, just to finish off your responses.
Chairman, might I speak to that?
Oh, yes, councillor Lerni, sorry, very briefly, thank you.
Thank you. I mean, I would like to formally second that proposal. In keeping with, you know, following usual procedure, but I would, I would just like to say that I pass through that point very regularly, almost every day. In fact, there is a steadily increasing flow of pedestrians crossing there and in particular, you know, you've got young mums with toddlers as well as their older, the older children heading off to the primary school. And it is really important at that point and we still have traffic speeding through there at 50 miles an hour.
Indeed. Thank you councillor Lerni. And thank you for the seconding of my motion. Okay, Chris, let's come back to you, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. The fourth question was about when Cala are going to install dog bins. I'll revert to Viv Hill in a couple of moments, if I may, I'll just try and rattle through a couple of others before I do that. The next question relates to having a site visit before the end of November. I'm more than happy to arrange that with whichever members of the forum may be interested and obviously resident association and Cala as well. The seventh question relates to Winchester movement strategy. There are a couple of elements to this question. Firstly, is there a plan for a park and ride at Three Maids Hill? If so, what is the timeline? I'm not aware of anything. Julie Pinnock may be, may wish to come in at some point and add to that. It is a movement, movement strategy objective and I think we would all like to see one, particularly me who live slightly north of the city, but not that I'm aware of in, in terms of actual plans on, on the table. There's a question relating to what alternative use there would be for land upon which the Kings Barton Park and Ride would be built if this doesn't go ahead. Certainly at the moment, no indication that it won't go ahead, so that's what we're working on the basis of. It is a planning condition for Cala to deliver, so any future use would require a planning application. I can't really comment any further on that.
Chris, I think councillor Todd has the answer to the question about the Three Maids Hill Park and Ride. Councillor Todd?
Yeah, sure. So the original, so the phase one of the City of Winchester Movement Strategy identified that we need extra park and ride capacity to the north of the city. We're now in phase two and detailed engineering studies are being, or detailed studies are being done to look at what sites might be logistically possible in order to provide that. But we are a long way away from buying a site and, and putting that plan in place. But the work is being done to work out where we might put one and how it might work.
Thank you very much, thank you. Sorry, Chris, carry on.
The third element to this question related to the closure of the Andover Road if there is a larger park and ride deserves the north of Winchester. I think councillor Todd's answer covers that. The final question relates to the community development worker. Julie Pinnock's already covered that. I'll just reiterate that, following discussions with Cala, that they felt there was a good synergy to, for me to take on that role. It is something I've done before professionally. I was a community engagement specialist as well. And as I've said to Katerina on the phone, I'm very much looking forward to working with the resident association and getting to know more people I actually love on the site. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Chris. Thank you. Katerina, did you want to come back on anything or either of your colleagues? Just briefly, please.
Yes, please, thank you, Chair. Of course, we also look forward to working with Chris. However, it was our impression that with having two separate roles, there would be a person dedicated to engaging with the community and that in this way merging the two roles together, there are people present who are definitely more expert, or expert, and I am not, but the section 106 probably presume that there would be two persons dedicated to two quite separate roles and we would like to understand where one role is going to start and not overlap with the next one and possibly with no
Are you thinking the might be a conflict of interest?
Conflict of interest, thank you, sorry.
Yes, no, that's fine. Perhaps Julie Pinnock, you'd like to just very briefly come back on that one? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I mean, I, I think what I'd start by saying is that the community development officer role is a part-time role, so it was only funded at half of an FTE. And then, and then what Cala offered to do was fund the other part of that as an implementation officer role. So as we have that continuity of one full-time person bringing both of those roles together. So in many respects, whether it was two half people, two different people or one whole, I think in terms of that role, that's perfectly reasonable. I'm quite content, having reviewed the job descriptions and how they've, they've come together, that these roles can operate together. And there will be clear divisions in terms of Chris will report to Steve Lincoln, who's the service lead, the overseas community wellbeing and other aspects. And he will have a greater presence on site and a greater liaison role with the residents. But that's, he's still able to maintain that implementation officer role. And also don't forget, and what we have as part of this forum is we have planning officers dealing with the planning issues on site as well. So, you know, that there are dedicated planning officers that are overseeing other aspects of the development as they go forward. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Julie. I think, I think that we should welcome the fact that Chris has the experience and he's done that sort of job before and at least we don't, you know, we don't have somebody with a very steep learning curve, you know, Chris is completely on top of all the issues. And I'm sure that he will be very conscientious in the, in the covering of both those roles. So let's see how we go. I'm sure he'll be very good. I'm very pleased to see that, that Chris has retained his full-time position. But thank you, Katerina.
Yeah, sorry, we're, we're looking forward to working more closely with Chris rather than maybe just at the, at the meetings of the forum. Sorry, just very briefly, going back to the few items that are outstanding at our end of the development, could I ask Viv that, well, the next forum meeting is going to be in January, so I really hope that long before then everything will be sorted here. But if by Christmas, all the lampposts and dead trees and landscaping and dog bins could be installed, that would be great. Also, I haven't heard, we were just talking about our questions, but are there any news about the play park? Because we see that they're working now, but that's another big thing that we didn't ask recently because we were told back in January that it was just around the corner. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Katerina. Perhaps Mr Hill, you'd like to comment on that very briefly and particularly on the play area. Can I book the mayor to come and open it yet?
I've stepped aside slightly from my dealings with the, with the play area and I know that Ed, Ed Spooner has been very close, closely engaged with my colleague Ian Currie, who's our technical director in terms of the work that we're undertaking to the play area. For those that don't know, we were incredibly embarrassed and disappointed with the quality of the, of the, of the soil there and felt that we couldn't safely open it to the public. There were a lot of stones and it's a chalk site. A lot of the stones were coming through the topsoil, through the turf and through the seed. And it simply wouldn't have been safe for children to be playing on there. If they were falling over, could easily have cut themselves on what is quite sharp flint and stone. So the work that we're doing is replacing all the fencing around there, so replacing what it was, a timber picket fence with a more substantial metal fence. We've had to re-soil and re-top, top seed and turf the, the whole area and including putting new planting in there. So the works are ongoing. I know Ian has been providing regular updates to Ed and I'm afraid I'm a little bit distant from where we are exactly on that now. And I'm sure we can provide a response to the residents' association by, by email in the next few days, if that would be helpful. Just on some of the other points, absolutely agree that the landscaping, lighting trees, where they've been dead would need to be replaced and that's something that myself, Alison and other colleagues, we had a site walk around last week and picked up a number of those issues ourselves. So the wider Cala director team are well aware of the issues there and we'll escalate that to, to ensure that those get put in. Clearly, there is a planting season for putting new trees in. We need to just make sure that we, within that planting season. It is, I think it is the winter season, so it's probably ideal time to get.
Now, now, get them in.
So just very, that would include, I know that the order has been placed for all the street furniture, including dog litter bins, benches. I'm trying to think, the bollards and benches around phase 1B in particular. So if they haven't gone in yet, doesn't sound like they have, they should be going in imminently. I know the order was placed probably a month or so ago, so I'm happy to, to follow that up and see where we are with installation. I think there may have been two separate issues there. One was dog litter bins around the, the phase of development itself. And I believe there may have been a separate discussion about putting additional dog litter bins along the ridgeline potentially, given that that is a well-trodden route for, for members of the public and dog walkers in particular. So certainly the, the commitment that we're putting some in on the, on the development phase, probably less certain as to what's happening on the ridgeline. But I'm sure we could, we can wrap that up into a bigger, bigger picture. Just while I'm speaking, there was a question about the park and ride and future land use for that area. We haven't got any plans for there at this particular moment in time. I think Chris has rightly said, we've got a consent to deliver that, we have to deliver that at the 650th occupation of the development. So as and when, and if that park and ride can migrate further north into a larger facility, then I think there's an opportunity there for us all to have a, put our thinking caps on about the land, the appropriate land use there. I don't see why that couldn't include residents as well. So certainly commit to, commit to that. Don't think there are any other points I need to cover off at this stage, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Viv, thank you. Mike Slim, you've got a hand up, you'd like to speak? That would be fine, just briefly, please.
Yes, thank, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to thank councillors Jackie and Martin and Kelsey for their support. Just to remind that on the 3rd of December, we will be speaking at the county council meeting, delivering our petition and we're hoping that all Winchester county councillors will support our petition. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike, thank you. Katerina, are you okay now?
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I'm struggling with my, thank you, I'll turn everything off now, thank you.
Thank you very much and thank you very much, your contribution is very much valued. Okay, let's move on to the next item. Oh no, hang on, we have one more part, public participation, which is councillor Anne Weir. Councillor Weir, please.
Thank you, Jane, councillor, Chair. I think in many ways, the points I wanted to make, and I was, mine was just a sort of a safety, which if, if it was needed, was around the two main points we've been discussing this evening. But I did want to, first of all, I think, you know, applaud the, the staff of the new primary school in getting the school open on time in September and welcoming 27 children into the school. It's been a real feat that they've achieved it under the circumstances of Covid and they've done so. And those of us who've met parents at the school have said how much they are, their children are enjoying the school and what great feedback we've had on that. So it's with some regret that I, I just want to amplify the message, I hope Viv will pick this up, that access to the school for about 50% of the parents and children is along the ridgeline, a number of them crossing the road, but many of them coming from phase 1A as well. And the access along that ridgeline from Andover Road just is not fit for purpose. And I think that between us all, it would be really good if we could take some ownership and responsibility for that access route because it is unacceptable that parents have to push children along a muddy track that isn't clearly maintained by anybody, is used heavily by dog walkers, many of whom only have access to one bin. And, and it really is, is not acceptable that, that parents and children have to get along there and it's only going to get worse from now on as, as the conditions decline. So I really hope that we can accelerate improvements at least up to the school, but obviously beyond as soon as possible this term, so that parents know that when they come back after Christmas, they, they will have a, a high quality environment to take their children to school. It's a real, really important signpost for the future of that school and how we want people to get there. And if there's anything we can do to bring the community together, to work on how we're going to do that, what it should look like, what sort of amenities are necessary, signage, bins and anything else that we could put along there that will make it a pleasant experience, then, you know, I know we're all prepared to get in, involved in that. We've talked a lot about the, the safety of the Andover Road and I just want to add my endorsement to the sentiments in the petition and encourage everybody to sign that. It really is important that we get grips with that now. Again, we have got parents and children coming from Harestock, which is great. It's a great school and I'm, I'm glad that they're benefiting from it, but they can't be crossing a 50 mile an hour road at, at 8:30 in the morning with traffic coming in and out of Winchester. And because of the slightly lower levels of traffic, the speeds are much higher at the moment. So please, let's get on with that one as fast as we can as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, councillor Weir, very much appreciated. Okay, let's move on to the next item on the, sorry.
Just during councillor Weir's contribution, councillor Porter indicated she'd like to speak.
Oh, right. Councillor Porter, sorry, carry on.
Thank you. And I really thank Anne for her contribution and we've met parents up there and Chris might like to record the number of times that we've met the county council to try and deal with this and they've refused every time. And we have even suggested the amount of money it would cost for them. And Nicola Wells was at a meeting with Chris and I in early August as well. This is after three years of. This is after three years of trying to get them to put a surface down. It would be really helpful if this forum could endorse that support for a surface there in the same way as we've just done for the crossing. Chris might like to comment.
Thank you, councillor Porter. I'm sure that we can, but would you like to comment, Chris? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, yes, I'm happy to. Yes, councillor Porter is right, she and I have both been at several meetings now and each time come away deeply frustrated by the lack of desire from colleagues at county to get this sorted out. And I appreciate the sentiment that's been shared throughout the members of the forum about their desire to get this done. It's something that we desperately want, I desperately want to get done as well. It just makes absolute sense. There is literally a connection to the school from this muddy footpath and we have to get that sorted. I thank the forum for their support in this.
And also, we know there are children going from Headborneworthy too, so we do know this is not just, it's in both directions.
Thank you, councillor Porter. Thank you, Chris. Perhaps we can add that to my letter to the county council supporting the residents association's petition and adds a strong endorsement of your request for a proper surface for that crucial footpath, councillor Porter.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
Thank you. Okay, let me move on to the next item on the agenda, which is Chris's presentation, the implementation update on the Kings Barton development. Thank you, Chris.
Chair, this report is very short and we've actually covered probably most of the contents through the questions that we've already had. Having said that, I'll just run very quickly through it. We're on paragraph 11.1 on page 14, for those following along. The development is obviously 2,000 dwellings. The consent for 423 in phases 1A and 1B was made five years ago-ish, six years ago. At the time of writing, there were 223 occupations. I'm pleased to confirm that sales are still continuing well at the southern end, the northern end being sold out. Lots of Londoners coming down to live in Winchester now that they see the countryside is slightly better than living in the big smoke. We've already touched on the implementation officer and combined role with community development officer in 11.4. We're still working out the exact details, but it's certainly my intention that I will be a more visible presence on site. There is space within Cala's offices for me to be and meet with people as and when it's necessary. And I think I'll be the first port of call for most people moving into the site now. I also look forward to working very closely with the housing associations. Members are probably aware there have been some issues with residents in the northern end. So I look forward to working with Vivid to try and come to some solutions to those issues. And 11.9, extension to working hours. Members are probably aware and for the benefit of the public, the government back in May decided that in order to allow developers to make up for lost time through, that was lost through the shutdown, they were going to, as a blanket approach across the country, allow developers to work until 10 o'clock at night, Monday to Saturday. They obviously had to appeal, apply to the local authority first, which Cala have done and we've given them consent to do that. Obviously, late night works will only be quiet, generally internal works. We're not expecting people to be digging large holes or anything late in the evening. I don't believe Cala have actually taken this up too much yet. Obviously, because of Covid, the rate at which buildings can go up has slowed because you only get one, you can only have the plumber or the plasterer in a building at the same time. So it's not as quick as it used to be. I suspect that's the reason why it hasn't been taken up. If Cala do take it up, we've asked them that they let to drop all residents round about them to let them know that there is going to be additional work going on. Barton Farm Primary is the last element and I echo everything that councillor Weir said. It's a lovely looking school and it's delightful to have children in it now. I understand there's going to be two reception years going in next year. So it's very quickly going to grow into a very vibrant school and I look forward to seeing it grow over the next couple of years. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chris. Do we have any questions to Chris or to councillor Porter, who is of course the cabinet member responsible for this this area of this council's work? Any questions, anybody? We have covered a lot, as you say, Chris, in the responses to the residents association. So councillor Lerni, you have a question, thank you.
Thank you, this was referred obliquely by councillor Porter earlier on about the work she and councillor Todd are doing in chasing up the requirements that have been made on the developer as part of the scheme. Now, we did ask for a schedule to be produced for the last Barton Forum meeting, which it duly was. So thank you for that, Chris. But what we haven't done is rolled that over into this meeting. And I think particularly when we've got the county with us next time, it would be really useful if we brought that back again so that we can interrogate them about what they're doing about some of these requirements in public.
Thank you, councillor Lerni. Can I just say, I think that's a very good suggestion and I would ask Matthew if we can have a rolling list of those commitments and what has and hasn't been addressed by the county council? That would be very helpful and if we could have that as a regular standing item on this agenda. Sorry, carry on councillor Lerni.
Yeah, so the question is about what action are we taking in order to push ahead with some of those requirements? You know, the time for those has technically passed. So for example, the Wellhouse Lane arch improvement, as well as the cycleway and pathway that's already been referred to was meant to be complete before the primary school was opened. I presume part of that was around expecting children to be coming the other way to an extent. I'm also very concerned about the failure of the county council to spend the money they've already received from Cala in respect of off-site works, particularly improving cycle and pedestrian routes off-site or to even at this point have put a plan forward as to how that money's going to be spent. We're already hearing about how the county might have to hand back a massive sum of money in respect of developments elsewhere in the county. And I don't want us to be in the position of losing those potential improvements from this site. So I wondered if Chris could comment on that.
Thank you, councillor Lerni, Chris.
Happy to, Chair. Councillor Lerni is very polite, saying they have technically missed some of the deadlines. They have missed some of them and they're well aware of their responsibilities to deliver the things that are in the section 106. Members and the public may be aware that there's been a change in personnel at Cala over the last year or so. I'm very pleased at the approach being taken, as demonstrated tonight, is that they're having individual people responsible for individual things that need to be done, rather than one person being responsible for delivering everything. So now I liaise with the people working on the roadside of things, I liaise with Alison and John Richards on the section 106 requirements and they are well aware that things have been missed. They have been working very hard to catch up with some of the things that have been missed. The car club, for instance, which apparently is difficult to provide at the moment because of Covid, but they are working very hard to get these things done as soon as possible. The highway specific elements, we met with Cala's, Ben Clifton and I from county council, met with Cala's directors last week to discuss where they had gone wrong and what we were going to be doing about it. And I think that's something we should probably discuss at greater length at the next meeting. But I can assure you that they are being put under a huge amount of pressure from us, as I'm sure Viv will happy to attest. They're being put under pressure from us and Hampshire County Council colleagues to get these things delivered that should have been done. They knew the requirements when they signed up to build the place and they need to get on with doing them. Viv may want to comment further, Chair.
Thank you, Chris. Viv, did you want to come back on that one?
I've just endorsed everything that Chris has said. I think that there are certain triggers which we know we have failed to deliver. The rail, the improvement works under rail bridge were one that were mentioned earlier. I'm not sure it helped at the time that the, I'm not making excuses, but the wording of those delivery mechanisms and the fact that those were linked to the school when actually the school was there to provide school places within the development rather than outside the development, probably didn't help matters and that we felt we needed to get the connections right throughout the wider site rather than the railway bridge works themselves, which are obviously in discussion with Hampshire County Council. Yes, we're talking to them regularly, getting all these costed in place and ready to deliver. The next big one that we need to deliver, which is the connection from Courtney Road through the southern end of the nature reserve underneath the railway bridge back into the development, that's got to be delivered by the 250th occupations. As Chris has said, we're at 223 at the moment. So I think we might be slightly higher than that, actually probably nearer 230, 235. So that's approaching. We've had the design and details for that, it's all been costed and we've met with the contractors to deliver it. So I'm hopeful that that one can be delivered on time. So hopefully leave that with a positive message.
Thank you, Viv. It would be nice to know that there is an element of consultation with local councillors, the residents association and so on. I know that some of these things are set in stone, but not all of them. For instance, it would be nice to know what is planned for the Wellhouse Lane Railway Bridge. There is the opportunity to include, for instance, an extra flashing sign to indicate to overheight vehicles that they're approaching a bridge that's low. We could have done with that a couple of months ago. That sort of thing, which, you know, the county and yourselves may not necessarily think of instantly or focus on the professional side of it, whereas we're focused on the practical, you know, how do the children with their bicycles get through the bridge safely and so on. So could I ask that you, you know, you work with the county council and also local councillors and residents and let us know at a stage when we can perhaps make a change, you know, without having to just be told what we're being given, you know, because as I say, everybody has a contribution to make, I believe.
It's a fair point. And I think certainly the detailed designs of those, of all these areas have been drawn up and I don't see why we couldn't share those. Perhaps Chris and I can discuss how that's shared externally to wider members. The details there, yeah, a lot of it's in the public domain anyway because it formed part of the outline planning consent, albeit that was back in 2011 to 2013. So perhaps an opportunity, say, to refresh our minds to what was proposed at the time and what was consented.
Thank you. I mean, there have been developments, obviously, since then, not least the potential route for a cycle route through the Wellhouse Cottage development. I don't know, Chris, if that was raised with Cala or we got anywhere with that proposal. So that would have got rid of the zigzag route and produced a much smoother route along the road and then up the hill through the new, what is now a new development and what then was just a farmyard. Maybe that's the sort of thing that, you know, we really do need to have more contribution and make suggestions about.
Can I comment on that one specifically, as you've mentioned it, if that's okay?
Yes, and then Chris can come in as well, thank you.
I think you're right, we had a, we were contacted by city council officers to discuss the possibility of having a connection in through the Barton Farm, the development in the south of Wellhouse Lane and had no objection to that tying in with our wider pedestrian cycle strategy. The difficulty there is that that phase of development itself is not due to come online for a number of years. So whilst in the future, there will be a pedestrian and cycle connection through that scheme, I think we need to get on and deliver the zigzag path, but it's got to be cycle friendly down to the railway, the railway bridge because then that at least will provide a connection to the ridgeline and get that full east-west connection through the scheme, past the school, back out to Andover Road. But yeah, we're well aware of the need to connect into the Wellhouse Lane development as well, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And Chris, did you want to come back on that as well? And then I have councillor Warwick, I've seen your hand up, so.
No, I have nothing further to add, Viv's covered it well, thank you.
Councillor Warwick.
Yes, thank you, Chair. And I just had a question about the build-out rate. I know, Chris, you mentioned that that was now increasing as people were moving from London. And I just wanted to pick your brains really on, is the build-out rate directly related to sales? Or are there other factors, obviously Covid, you know, the availability of bricklayers? What are those influencing factors on the build-out rates? I don't know if you can give us a quick update or overview on that, please, thank you.
Chris?
My understanding of Cala is, and Viv may wish to comment on this as well, that it's a popular site, so they are building to sell homes and things that they are building are being sold, which is positive from their point of view. I think they do pride themselves on taking a bit longer to build their homes than other developers, quality and all that. So they are taking the time that they've taken. Obviously, as I mentioned, the issues with Covid restrictions mean that slower than they were before. But generally, I don't think there's any restriction on sales and I think Cala are quite keen to get going with the next phase as well. So I think that's positive too. Viv may wish to add something else.
Yes, please, thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris. And I think essentially, I suppose the way we see it is build-out rates and sales rates tend to be two quite different things on a development site. And the build-out rate will tend to be consistent across all our sites and that we've got to deliver so many or build and deliver so many homes per development per year. That's the targets that Cala have set, legal and general set for us. The sales rate has improved at Winchester, that's no doubt about that. It is probably one of our best performing sites at the moment. So that has probably increased. I don't know the exact figure, but it's probably an average you might expect to sell four a month. At Winchester, we might be up to five or six a month at the moment. So its build rate will stay the same, that should be consistent, putting Covid to one side. Sales rates have certainly improved.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Warwick, thank you, Viv, that's great, thank you. Okay, are there any more questions on the report, which we are due to note simply? So no more questions? No, well, thank you very much. So that report, thank you, Chris, is duly noted. And so we now move on to the next meetings of the forum. They are due to be the 19th of January and the 16th of March 2021. I'd like to capture in the minutes that we're going to begin to have a work plan and a list of future agenda items for the forum. And for this list, I'd like to put forward three items and then perhaps members would like to contribute other things. So initially, of course, highways to include a discussion with Hampshire County Council officers in advance of any decisions that are finally made about road improvements and so on. But also to talk about the two key issues that I shall be writing to the county council about following this meeting. An update from the housing associations, I think we've got two now involved at the two different ends of the site. And then I'd also like to see an update on Barton Meadows, a report on wildlife and ecology. But I'm happy to take suggestions from members as to other issues that we could put on this rolling agenda of particular items that we'd like to discuss at the forum, if anybody's got anything else they'd like to suggest. Councillor Porter.
Could we add on the village centre, please?
Yeah.
That's going to be, obviously, we've got to discuss the changing face of the shared space. And also, there is a very large hole where I think. space. And also, there is a very large hole where I think a shop should be at the moment. So I think we do need to see the progress on that village centre.
It might be appropriate perhaps to have a forum workshop on the village centre. I don't know whether Covid regulations will allow that to happen at any point, but perhaps that could be considered. Councillor Godfrey, you have a question. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Manchen. I think the issue of formal involvement of the residents' association is something which was raised a meeting three years ago. And I think we ought to be discussing that and monitoring that narrative more established. We did say we would look at it again.
Okay, yes, happy to do that. I don't know whether you want to debate that actually in the forum. Well, I do believe that actually the residents' association do have quite a key role now in forum meetings. They come in first with their list of questions, which we attempt to answer in advance of the meeting in any event. Chris, did you want to make a comment on that?
Chair, yes, thank you. I did. My understanding was that there is now a member of the Headborne Worthy Parish Council who is a resident of Kings Barton. And it was my understanding that that person will become a representative on the forum. I hope both for the residents' association and the wider people within the development. Is that not his position?
I think that will help. Sadly, she wasn't able to come to this meeting this evening. But certainly she has, she will be able to have a formal role as a parish council representative on the forum. I think if we just, if we elevate the public questions at the beginning to the contribution from the residents' association, followed by public questions, that would then give them a particular role within the forum. But again, we can add that to a future agenda and discuss it in more detail if that's felt useful. I'm happy to take advice on that. I'll talk to officers about that. Are there any other questions or suggestions? Katerina, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I think at the last meeting that we attended, I think it was in January, councillor Prince suggested that there should be a rolling list of items of outstanding works and, when it happens, unmet or missed deadlines for trigger points based on the occupation of Phase 1A, Phase 1B, and all the following ones. And I think that would be very useful for everyone to see where we are and what is outstanding. And whatever the reason, we'd like that all the boxes are ticked eventually, whereas we always come up with our questions and say, okay, but this has been left for so long. I think that would help everyone. And I was hoping to see that today, but it's been a black hole since the last meeting. So hopefully it will happen.
In fact, when we discussed that, I did ask that that should be a regular agenda item in future forums. So that will be, that will be happening, Katerina. But thank you for raising that again. Okay, well, in the absence of any other further ongoing issues, please think about it. If something comes up, do let me know. I'm sure that we can add it to a future meeting for discussion. I think that would be very helpful. In the absence of any other questions or issues, I'd like to thank everybody very much for coming along this evening and for your contributions. I think it's been a very positive meeting. And again, apologies that we haven't met quite as often as we would normally do so, but I think we're going to be in a new one. So thank you very much, everybody, for your attendance, and good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair.